Now, um, again, it does all the sweeping, cleaning windows. The only kind of random thing is the light bulbs moving, but I think it's Steve Ringer's always happy to help us with that. So, we really don't, and if we needed something done on the roof, we would get a roof person. The street department came and cleaned the gutters, so we kind of just spread it out. Okay, Jerry?
Um, yeah, I just wanted to make sure I have this in there correctly. So, maintenance is zero, sodium ten thousand, board members ten thousand, FICA Medicare thirty-three hundred, or zero longevity, zero, involvement program five thousand.
And we can get rid of longevity, right?
It sounds like FICA did something like that.
It's a small point, but the FICA Medicare pays a full-time employee.
I think that's what Mark's asking about.
What?
The FICA Medicare is based on a full-time employee, does that make any difference?
I don't know how you pay thirty-three hundred, is it based off of the, the sodium ten for the thirty? It should be seven point six five percent, it's not, for ten thousand dollars. All the board works. Okay, if it's not, it'll all be about fifteen hundred thirty dollars.
Jerry, did you get everything? Yes. Okay, cool. We do a gym reimbursement program that was established in two thousand twelve, somewhere in there, uh, for employees that utilize a approved healthcare facility, um, a certain number of times per quarter, and Julie manages all of that.
All of it comes back.
Yeah. We've got the county dispatch increase in there, that is assuming that you all approve enough money for them to hire their new person. That's really up to you, we can have that conversation. I guess, I can pull up those numbers, I don't have them in front of me, but... Chiefs, do you have any opinions that you would like to expound upon at this point in time on that?
I question the need for a set of accountability meetings, you want? We can cut it out later if we need to, but I question the need for the catch for personal.
I think the, I think the need is there, but I also think there should be some more accountability as well. I'm not exactly sure if there's better management and overseeing personnel that might avoid having to hire a third person. So, um, you know, while, while currently it is probably needed the way things are now, but that's not to say things could not be improved there as well, and it's not necessarily our house, we do have a say, um, in how things go. So, I mean, that's, and that's where I, and that's where I'm getting at, is asking those tough questions and looking at that even deeper to see if that can be changed.
Okay, so you want to just leave it for now and see what we come up with? Great, okay. Anybody else got anything for Board of Public Works?
I have a question.
Yeah?
On the Board of Works salary, um, the sewer department pays the first meeting of the month, and then the city has always paid any additional Board of Works meetings, so I didn't know if that was changing or not. It was ten thousand, so I was, so you're expecting to spend ten thousand on salaries for Board of Works? We usually are paid by the sewer department.
That would probably be, did you guys know that?
We paid the first meeting, and if there was a second meeting, an amount that, that it depends on who called it, like, police or fire, come out of you guys, or the street department, but if the utilities, like the wastewater, that's third board, the Board of Works is, as well. We don't have any utility boards, we have the water company pays for the water board, and then the sewer is always paid.
Makes sense, we've all expended nine hundred dollars this year.
Yeah.
We've all expended nine hundred dollars in six months.
Four plus meeting.
No, but if you haven't seen it, because it won't be reflected if it comes out of your budget, they won't show it in here.
Right. Just any special call to be made?
So, you pay the first meeting of each month.
So, they only have one a month?
Yeah.
We're stuck with nothing, but we don't know how many extended meetings we'll have.
I don't think we should have any this year.
I don't remember twenty-five years of special meetings.
Did you open, did you open bids for the sewer?
Not all of it, I would say some of it should stay, I think probably paid for when they do interviews. That's a special meeting, those kinds of things, those are paid. So, like, if the utilities would call a meeting because of, um, letting bids or something like that, or paying the sewer. Right, then we would pay, yes, we did, Mark.
Yeah, you had sewer bids, you paid for that.
Traditionally, it's the two and December, there's one.
Yeah, we would pay the first one, and then if the second one was because of something with wastewater, utility would pay for that as well.
Usually just to pay in year-end bills.
Yeah, just that would be on the city side.
We pay for one meeting a year, per month, for the whole year with forty-eight hundred dollars.
Okay, because we've already had two special interviews, and we have another one Wednesday, and we have two in...
But that's where those line items, if you can just...
Yes, no, it's not that much.
Just leave it, or cut it?
Just leave it.
Okay. Anything else on there? Okay, bring it. I do need to make one change.
Sure.
Um, on police K nine, it shows thirty-four fifty, I need to bring that up to forty-five hundred. It has, um, it's gonna be one zero one zero zero seven one one eight. I'm not, I'm not making a change in it, I'm just keeping it at forty-five.
So, this over here will be forty-five hundred.
I would have asked that you give us, uh... Give me to give to him the ability to add another, to move his salary to sixty-four, at least in the range, so that we can budget for it, please.
I'm sorry, is that a good place?
His, he did not request a salary increase, um, even if we don't do the three percent, if I can have another two thousand to put on top of the range, because we need the appropriations to match the most of the salary range. Does that make sense? Okay, so we, um, gave a change up to sixty-four, please? Any other questions for the police chief?
You go with the new line items.
Is there one that any of you question?
The new lines, which are in yellow, those actually used to be all, um, put together and put into rank and certification pay. So...
They were all lumped in one?
Yeah, they were all lumped in one, so what they did was they just individualized the ranks out, so nothing new, just...
If I add it all up to care of last year?
Uh, no, I did ask for an increase, uh, for captain, I asked for a seven hundred dollar increase. Lieutenant, last year was twenty-one fifty, I'm asking for twenty-seven fifty. Sergeant was eleven hundred fifty, I'm asking for seventeen fifty, and the reason for that is we have not increased any of our rank pays in probably twelve to fifteen years, and I've actually put more responsibility on my admin, and so that's why I'm asking for the increase.
So, they, they received salary increases, but in those, in those positions, that additional responsibility, they've received them for many years.
Anything else?
It's, it's been, it's kind of been, what's the five thousand increase in the other services and charges?
Um, the reason I talked to the mayor about that, the reason why we're adding on that is more for promotional, um, with all the events that we would, of course, like to do in twenty-twenty-one now. Yeah, um, what we are not doing this year, we're not sending out letters for donations that we normally do with businesses, because we knew the businesses were hit hard with COVID this year, so that's why I increased it to five thousand, just to help out in twenty-twenty-one, and if everything rebounds, then we can start going back to donations and lower that back down for the businesses.
And I asked him as well, there's a lot of discussion, we've been talking about it for quite a while, about monthly sort of night outs in different communities across the city, to familiarize people with police and fire, and not make them afraid of when they show up to help them, and just some additional funds to help provide those monthly experiences versus the one big national night out each month for each year.
What did those, what did you do last year?
Uh, we did one community cookout, and we did a big national night out for capitals.
For Parkers National Night Out.
Yeah, we had a lot of comments. Sarah, wait, anything? Okay, fire, Nathan? Want to go with your questions, Kevin, or? Now you got nothing.
Well, so the fire salaries, um, that's same as last year, we're not looking at any, you guys are both to the points for manpower, you...
Right, so, so we're, we're maxed out in the fact that I have to come to council and ask for an additional person.
How many, how many?
So, currently, we have, um, we have thirty-one total, and that's including myself and Allen Campbell, who are both civilians. Um, so that would be twenty, no, thirty, thirty-one, or I'm sorry, twenty, yeah, twenty-nine, um, firefighters, um, two and three, total. So, uh, hold on. Correct, we are, we are at full capacity, the five that we hired this year replaces the five that retired and the two that, three that retired and the two that resigned. So, so we are, we are at capacity there. Like I said, at the, at the mayor's discretion, we built in the three percent there, which obviously has been moved to the one point five. As for an increase in my salary, um, A, I wasn't, uh, when I took the job, it was already set, um, so I came to the, to the table to negotiate, and then found out that, that we couldn't, uh, so I informed the mayor that, that we'd be, um, doing that, um, at this time or the closest possible time. As well as, um, I ran a chief comparison chart of, uh, several cities throughout the, uh, throughout the state that are either smaller or larger than us, uh, slightly, to get kind of a comparison of where we're at, um, price-wise, or, uh, I'm sorry, salary-wise for, for fire chief, um, which is, which is where the, uh, that number came from, the sixty-five thousand came. So, moving... I'm sorry?
We were worried at that discussion. Would that be the all-salary, all-time?
All right, I've just given some background as to why and how.
Need clothing allowance, seven thousand dollar increase.
Yes, so we have, um, thirty-one total employees. The employees have been given, since I've, uh, been here and in long time standing, it's been set at a thousand dollars. Uh, they get two five hundred dollar reimbursements a year. If you look at the, uh, twenty-twenty approved budget, there's only twenty-six thousand, um, that's for twenty-six people, we have thirty-one people. So, that's, I ask, so that can actually come down to, um, that could come down to thirty-one thousand, and we could actually cut two thousand dollars off that. So, it would be, it has to be a thousand dollars per person. Currently, the, the fire inspector and myself's clothing comes out of the, uh, general budget, but to better allow for spending of that, um, it would be easy to move us to the thousand-dollar clothing allowance as well. So, in that line item, um, eight, one, two, six, fire clothing allowance, then should read, instead of thirty-three thousand, actually read, um, thirty-one thousand.
I have a que, I have a question about that.
Uh-huh.
And you also have six thousand for clothing allowance to fire, Honda Fire Fund.
That is for the, okay, so, yeah, we could, we can go either way, we can take the, I think, Julie's at five employees.
Five.
Six, okay, so we can take six, we can keep that at six thousand, or do six thousand there, um, and then make up the difference here. So, part of my employees are paid out of the Honda Fund, um, the other part are paid out of, uh, the general fund, so...
So, plenty of Honda, you got thirty-one total.
Correct.
About twenty-nine. Now, if you make thirty-one, so...
Right.
So, you need twenty-nine, for the thousand dollars, it'd be twenty-nine thousand dollars total, so you use six thousand on Honda, that would be twenty-two, does that line out there, it'd be twenty-three thousand? Am I misunderstanding?
There's thirty-one, I'm wanting to add Allen and myself to that, instead of taking it out.
Thirty-one thousand minus six would be twenty-five thousand.
Twenty-five thousand.
Twenty-five?
Because you're, oh, right.
So, thirty-one is going to twenty-five now?
Yes. Jerry, did you get that? Okay. And then if you will move his salary to sixty-four, is the cap?
Sixty-four.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else for Nathan? Mark?
We pretty much held the entire budget flat, over the raises. A couple items, because of the amount of expenditures, hundred car tickets have gone up, so we had five hundred dollar supplies. But one new item, you do see, GPS services. I have investigated putting GPS units in trucks. It's especially helpful in the summer months, if everybody out picking up rush, yard waste, you get phone calls, you don't know where people are, and for snowplow season, it's absolutely critical to have it.
That's against law, you should follow what you said.
Yeah, I know. My radios are bad enough, you can't talk anyhow. Now, you just tell them to pull over on the side of the road when their phone rings, because it's usually me calling, because the radios don't work. But that's the one thing we've added.
How many guys do you have?
I knew you'd ask, how many? I believe, twelve? I think, twelve.
Twelve?
Not counting me and the mechanic, myself and the mechanic, I think there's twelve.
Now, you're paid out of...
I'm paid out of MBH, they're not included in, myself and the mechanic are not included in here. We used to have more, but it's been reduced, and we may do, we've been using part-time help on a year-round basis.
Are you still gonna do that?
Well, he finally graduated.
Have you had part-time help this summer?
Yes, but I had it full-time, one of work twenty-nine hours a week year-round. Unfortunately, he graduated this year.
Unfortunately, he graduated.
From my perspective, from his perspective, fortunately, he's off the back of a government strike now with a degree. Unfortunately, for me, it's awful difficult to find somebody to fill that position. But if maybe he's gonna be a little better because of more people e-learning and not going back to college campus, I'm hoping maybe I can find one to replace him, because that's an absolute bargain for me to get a full-time employee.
I'm not really full-time, but...
Well...
Full-time, no.
Year-round, part-time employee. But other than that, the budget's pretty much been held flat all the way through.
And then on your capital, it looks like you're gonna, you don't want a flat there, but then you want a backhoe?
A half a backhoe. The other half is in the MBH.
Okay.
The reason being, we've had the same one since two thousand and eight. I've actually had it at RPM Machinery for the last three weeks. I got a twenty thousand dollar bill, I don't even want to have to attack, attack my budget, but unfortunately, I had to have it because it wouldn't move. And I think it's probably due for a replacement.
So, you're presenting, you're being a teeter, you know, they're having, that's how I did it, it's a smart way to go.
We tried to move it all over to MBH, but I think to comply with the state statute, you're not supposed to use MBH funds for non-MBH items, and the backhoe probably...
It's used...
Equally between the two departments, so we put the cost equally between the two parts.
And we took it from the state statute. You guys just bought, we just bought the flatbed this year?
Yes, that's why it was in last year's budget, we took it out this year, but we didn't need one.
Any other questions?
The one thing we have, and though it's kind of optimistic, is I would love to have the property that sits in front of the street department, it's not ours.
What?
The property in front of the street department, all the way along Montford, is not belong to the city of Grantsburg. That is owned by Central Indiana Will.
Or it's due south of where the recycling center used to be.
By the way, all the recycling bins from the used set, if you go from the railroad tracks all the way to the alley, that's not my problem. We trespass across it every day, most times.
Like, I don't even know them.
Yes, they do, they pay the property taxes every six months.
Still doesn't mean you know. Or they will.
I contacted them four years ago, um...
Jacksonville, Florida, right?
Yeah, I had to go to Jacksonville, Florida, I got ahold with a gentleman, he said, send me an offer, I sent him a praise value, and I don't remember what it was. Fourteen thousand.
How much, um, how much was, was block?
Forty foot wide.
No, it's like fifty-seven feet off of the right-of-way to the east, from the railroad tracks to the alley. I don't know the amount of area, I'm sorry.
Hundred plus feet deep, hundred thirty?
Yeah, probably. But anyhow, he laughed at that, and we did make another offer at that point in time.
They compliant that you're driving on, what's, what's problem?
We've done a long-range capital plan. I have about eight hundred thousand of my industrial equipment that sits outside year-round, it has no place to go. The one site we have some building area would be where the recycling building, recycling containers used to be. You want to put a building upon somebody else's property? I don't think city, building standard will allow you to do that.
It's kind, I mean, it's kind of part of a longer term.
In other words, that's the intention, we're gonna have to have the facility at some point in time. Or we're gonna have to leave.
Somebody write that down, write that down.
I'll put that in next to the budget.
And I agree, you know, and we've talked about that.
We've talked about that, but I think it's something, we're gonna end up with a free property that's gonna have very little value to anybody if they don't have any great funding whatsoever. So, if you ever plan on doing anything with the property we currently own, it's hard to put it back on the market, you better have street access.
And that's why you're... See, we put that in the edit fund, um, it's something that if it comes to fruition, we will do that. Um, if it doesn't, it just stays in the fund, and it's not a, it's not a negative on the budget line item, if you will.
And I mean, you talked about money being returned, uh, I just done some quick calculations, Kevin. Last year, of course, I, I, I pinch pennies because I can spend any money, but we returned fourteen point six percent of our budget in two thousand and nineteen. Yeah. My problem is, if you don't need it, don't spend it.
Keep it up. Okay, so Sarah, Ron? Um, we've, we've got a couple changes in here quickly before we... So, we, we have in the line item for Ron, because Ron is paid a third by general fund and two-thirds by the utility, is line item at the top, Jerry, his salary should probably be thirty-three. And that would leave us room for what we've been discussing. And then if we... Scroll down to the assistant, which is Steve Ringer, we can move that line item to nineteen, that's all, please. Is that right, Julie? That's what we talked about today?
I think that was a three percent.
I think so.
And then, don't forget the longevity.
Yeah, um... And then the longevity line should be seventeen hundred versus forty-three, please. Okay, Ron?
Thirty-two longevity, thirty-two, so seventeen.
Yeah.
On my general longevity, and the assistant goes to ninety.
Nineteen, because that is also paid half by the utility.
Who else included in the board members? Planning and board of general appeals, it's over.
Yes.
And the secretaries, secretary?
What's, what's those increases come out to?
Why is that high? They get seventy-five, a meeting, and the president gets something. No, it's a hundred, they, last year, we moved them up to, were they saying it's Board of Works a hundred, remember, president's one twenty-five? They, they don't meet every month, we never know how many months they're gonna be. Is that just assuming that we're gonna have two meeting, I mean, Board of Works and planning, there's gonna be each month? There may be enough money to pay for a meeting every year.
Yeah, this year, you guys approved eleven-five. Yeah, I don't know why that is either, Kevin. Right.
The secretary.
We just think eleven-five?
Yeah, well, I mean, there's twelve plus.
Jerry, do you know why that is? Was that just the transcription from us?
We're just around here for five.
Plan and commission is five plus eight, five plus president's six, six hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Did you get the secretary?
And then P C A is supposed to be five.
Five times twelve is a hundred forty-four.
Did you get the two secretaries?
Secretary's, so it would be, yeah, first.
Not too far off. Twelve months, twelve members, that's a hundred forty-four, that's fourteen thousand four hundred, then you gotta put in your secretaries and your president on top of that, so it's not that outrageous.
We spent eleven thousand. Yeah, because we've only had one, two planning session meetings this year so far. That's the big unknown. But just your YouTube, though.
So, those are just paid by a meeting?
Yeah.
Do you want to leave it?
I mean, if you do the math, it comes up to what, fourteen, you said?
Yeah, without the presidents and without the secretary.
Yeah, um, Sarah, you want to discuss that?
Sure. Along with wanting to update and do a unified development ordinance, which will clean up a lot of our, um, clean-up using ordinancees and stuff, so they're easier to understand, uh, just put together, you know, type thing. Um, most of the time when that is done, it goes... Um, most of the time when that is done, it goes along, it goes better along the hand-in-hand with comprehensive plan because, um, our last comprehensive plan was done in fourteen or fifteen? Right around there.
Somewhere in there.
There's a state mandate.
They're usually five-year plans.
The state mandate.
No, but, but the state does.
Current comp plan was required.
Five-year plan?
They're, they're built for five to ten, not to exceed seven. Um, the state does.
Sorry.
Yeah, the state does require you to have one, like legally, but if you don't, you don't get, I mean, from the ground side of things. And, yeah, go ahead.
So I, um, have spoken with a couple, three different companies in, um, getting some idea of cost and stuff, and each and every one of them said, you're better off if you've got a big comprehensive plan to do the ordinance updates and all that together, um, cause they go hand-in-hand a lot together. So, um, it's about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the comprehensive plan, and then it's about a hundred and thirty for the unified development ordinance, which are, they both take quite, quite a bit of time, it's not like in six months it'll all be done. It would be a, a company, of course, to do it, I don't know, there'd be a lot of meetings, um, I don't know, a year, year and a half working, it'd be all completed. The unified development ordinance is something, uh, um, I think it's been talked about in the past before I was in this position. Um, I don't know why, you know, they go forward, and a lot of your, your cities and stuff are going to that, cause it just makes everything more, you know, more easier to read. Um, if you're not coming to the time to concentrate and do things up, um, that's where like, there's only, you know, the map, all the stuff is imposed well.
Your chains are now.
Develop that part of it, because our dummy map was still out, outdated, you know, so many, the saves on it, but, so they, they kind of go hand-in-hand, so that's why the team would be coming together.
I'll build my planning, we should head on to our budget next year, or the year after, past year.
And I think, so they're both in here, so you'll see, there's the comp plan, and then down to the bottom, there's the unified development ordinance.
See, we've, we've, we've talked about it, and I've been on planning mission for many years, and we, and we've talked about updating those ordinances, meeting after meeting, sidebars after sidebars, we used to, we were gonna meet every, every other Tuesday at nine-thirty to start working through it, and I wouldn't show, Ron, I mean, they would just try to get four or five of those together every other Tuesday at nine-thirty, it was like, it never happened.
At the same time, the county started working on theirs, they kind of went in a different direction, cause they were trying to tweak up their old stuff, and we kind of had the attitude that we kind of need to start moving like this, and building good some land use ordinance.
So, you know, and it has been, I always say, six years since we've done the comp, comp, so we, it's something that need, I mean, it's, I think it's a must. Whether you do it, whether you plan on spending the money next year, or try to hold off one more year.
Well, the unified development ordinance sort of comes after the comp plan is almost done.
Yeah.
And we may not get there in two thousand and twenty-one, so that.
But we may enter into a contract.
We may get, we, we may need some of the money, I highly doubt we get both done next year. So that's why I am, we'll be back.
So will you enter into a contract money?
Sure, and we would like to be in that. But again, that might lose, that might be more money to come back at the end of the year, to be used for next year.
And if we can find a firm that will do it for less revenue, and spend more than is appropriate or necessary.
And firms do do both, so maybe we can get a package deal that we would need the whole amount of money for, to run us through both projects. We've studied, but that's why they're separate, that's why they're both in.
Very smart.
I like the discount.
Discounts, couponing. Look, I'm not.
Anything else for Sarah? Or Ron? Okay, Jerry, that brings us to the end of general fund, correct?
Yes.
Did we get to a green?
Yes. Okay, with the understanding.
When we get to.
With, with that same understanding that we discussed previously, hitting that unused amount, which it sounds like there are potentially some areas, but I do wanna point that out. That it's based off of hitting that unused goal, but yes, it is at, um, projected surplus of three thousand three hundred and eight dollars.
Let's cut some more.
But also, um, we would need to go through any of the salary adjustments, um, we would have to go through and make all those, so it would be even more than three thousand. So that's not including salary adjustments? Not right now, I haven't changed in, any of that. Bush, Mayor, I wanna work with you definitely on, since you were talking about the ranges, I wanna make sure that all that's in there correctly, but yeah, that's, currently that's not changing yet.
Okay.
Also, we're talking about five hundred thousand, so we're gonna have to work on the unused.
Okay.
Moving on, moving on. Somebody say that. MBH, Mark?
Yeah, it's big, red, and ugly. The number on the bottom of the page, that's pretty much the synopsis. Yeah, it is. Go to the second page, you're only looking at the top pile, there you go, two hundred and eighteen thousand. Oh. It's based on revenues.
There's nothing really you can do about that, I mean.
We have, we have been short in MBH for years, we tend to utilize what cash reserve we have, which is fairly significant.
Yes.
Uh, but these kind of numbers, this far as a red, don't take them long to start destroying our surplus. Um.
How do we fix it?
I did do some checking, though. Last year, we approved a budget for about eight hundred thousand. We limited what we done for paving, but we returned twenty-one percent unspent, which is about a hundred and seventy thousand. So our two hundred and eighteen in the red, if we can continue to do that with the budget, you're talking about forty thousand dollars for a red number.
Plus.
Or did you assume greater than five percent?
Very bad news.
Don't tell me you assume twenty-one percent.
Because historically, year after year, so I do want to point that out, whenever you're looking at the bottom of this fund, um.
Ooh.
Yes, because you look at the budget.
You're evil, you're evil.
So. But that's all where you were going with, I was like, I gotta point this out, um, so if you just look at.
It almost happened, I'm sorry.
Yeah, pretty much what you're.
I see it now, fifteen percent.
The revenue is, projected revenue is only about half of what your projected budget is right now, and that is because of a major decrease in projected revenues for MBH distributions.
Plus half of your two hundred and eighteen thousand forecasted deficit is a hundred thousand dollars, that's the increase for CCG, right?
Yeah, I mean, this, this does have three hundred and fifty thousand of that seven hundred and seventy-five.
The other thing you have to also realize, Kevin, we can't say, well, they don't have CCMG.
No, I'm not saying, I'm not saying that, I'm.
But I mean, we, then we're stuck with trying to maintain what streets we have.
It's a matching.
And paying a hundred percent of it.
It's a matching grant, so.
Yeah, but if you don't have money.
You gotta have it there.
I mean, don't you have to have a certain amount of money to get money?
It's a fifty fifty program for us.
It's a fifty fifty for us.
So if we don't have, if we don't have it, we don't get it. Isn't that how it works?
Yes. In other words, I think I shared it with some of the council, not everybody. Most communities have a property tax levy to support their MBH.
We don't.
We put absolutely zero into ours, and have for years.
I know that.
Yeah. I, I always, I hate, I hate to compare it, being our neighbor, but we have a neighbor that puts twenty-seven percent of their property taxes strictly into their MBH.
Which way's that, that way or that way?
That way.
That way.
We have one that way that takes a million dollars and puts it in a thoroughfare fund for street paving annually. Our city council chooses to put zero in, and always has. And that's the one thing, when we started looking at this trash fee, if we would be able to take money out of our sanitation budget and pick those expenses up elsewhere, in other words, maybe you could put, let's say we save, I don't know, how much does a penny generate for this area in Grantsburg, can you tell me that, Gary, off the top of your head?
Um, I can look at your assessed value and calculate it real quick.
I was going to hold it you, but I didn't.
No, off the top of my head.
And I know what you did, what he say about based on control, this is, we don't direct any of our property tax money to the list, but we also, you know, fortunately our property taxes are the highest rate.
One, just one penny is just over forty-six thousand dollars.
So in other words, if we could take two hundred and fifty thousand of the money that the trash fee is going to have, that's proposed, and forty-six thousand? So in other words, if you could take six cents in two thousand and twenty-two of your general fund, which would normally go to sanitation, you could have a six-cent levy on MBH and have you the quarter of a million dollars that were filed for children. Is that not correct?
Yeah, any, I mean, it's a pot of money, pretty much, so anything that you would take and maybe put over to MBH would just mainly come from the general fund, is that your main?
And then your, your general fund subsidizing the sanitation would be there anymore, but you'd have to commit that to your MBH. And then we would have our, a little bit of money at least going towards it on annual basis.
How much do we spend out of general fund to support? It's the MBH.
A big zero. I think Vayenna's seen the paper, yeah, I, I think I gotta show her. So that was.
Total sanitation.
Sanitation, our tipping fees were running in the red, cause we can't even cover the possible land building that had a crash, she was not aware.
So that, that's gonna be an increase, right?
So that's what Mark's talking about, is we subsidize the hell out of trash right now with.
General fund money.
That, that was my question.
So if we could take some of, well, we can't take it all out of there. We could, but I mean, you're talking one hell of a, then.
Then the general fund, just that we're gonna have a general fund?
No.
By.
Then you would have that general fund savings that you could allocate so much of a tax levy towards your MBH, and just leave it stay there each year to give you a little bit of money. So when things turn around and we start having CCMG programs, and we're still at a fifty-fifty match, in other words, we apply for a lot, somewhere around five to six hundred thousand dollars of the CCMG a year. Cause that's all the matching money we got.
Two fifty to three hundred thousand are what we love with.
You know, and it's sad when you see everybody else going, I've looked at a billion, I've looked at a billion, I've looked at a billion, and we're going, I have a little money, I got three hundred and fifty thousand, that's all we can afford. So we're trying to get that MBH fund to where we actually have a revenue to go out to the matching grants.
But that's where the trash fee increase comes in, so that we can take the general fund money out of that, and we would allocate some of it to that, and some of it to the other costs associated with the street department, and things like that. So it's kind of two-fold.
But our current MBH balance, we can survive this budget for a year.
Yeah, if you look at the summary page, um, the far-right column that shows for MBH, where the ending cash, even with that deficit fee, um, they, I mean, it's over a hundred percent.
Mm-hmm.
Cash reserve, so right around a hundred, if you kind of restricted fund as well, travel over, but. So, yes.
Yes.
I know you always say to have a six-month operating budget, and everything that we, I have learned through financial courses at Purdue and road school, they say, often they, it's a year budget. So we have worked, we're, we're working in with that point, so we have it, and even if we did approve this budget as presented, I will still have more than a year's budget in cash reserve. I'm not sure you, that didn't come easily, but we got it there. Cause that sat down with Gary Herbert, cause at that time, our MBH was nothing.
The sol, the two sol spreaders you're asking for, those, uh, replaced worn-out sol spreaders.
One conflicted rested out, and we'll let him file out back. And the other one was for a replacement fee handle, that we don't have much better. You know, we got a couple of those that we still pull behind the trucks. And then you have to work on one of them, if it's anything on the electronic components, we spend probably more of the parts than what we paid for when they were new twenty-one years ago. And that fifteen, we took that one out. Yes, if you notice the green one, it's not, oh, it is back in.
Yeah, it's in there.
Okay, we had, then we have a note to take that one out, we could survive without for one more year, I thought we talked about that in your office. Or was it also in the?
We moved it out, we moved it out of there.
It was out, it was in the edit, we moved it out to edit, took it out of there, and put it back in here. Mainly because for this one year, we are short, but we can maintain a one-year cash reserve in the fund with this budget. And I can assure you, that's probably the, the best fund balance we got in the city.
It's definitely up there with, as far as.
Not the most dollars, but percentage-wise, that's probably number one.
Yeah, with, with ED and that economic development fund, that's pretty good as well, but yeah. It's definitely, it might be a second. I mean, really, you guys are, you guys are doing a very good job as far as cash reserves, so. That's all, that's all funds overall.
So you're saying we didn't do it this year?
Perfect, I'm sorry.
Well, I mean, we need to be allocating tax dollars to this list.
If I, I think what we need to do.
When I look at this list, what I see is what every.
Probably else does, but.
Everybody, what, that's, that's what, that's what your taxpayers see with this stuff.
Yeah. I know, I.
This other stuff?
The biggest complaint that's in my department is everybody, well, why the hell aren't you paving my street? Well, I don't have funds. Well, do you know what my property taxes are?
Exactly, that's what.
And everyone, I'm, I'm straight forward and I'm, I'm sorry, I hate to tell you, but not one penny of your property taxes goes towards the city streets. Well, why in the hell don't they? And I give them the standard answer, I throw you guys under the bus and say, talk to your city council, they're the ones that decide that. I'll be honest, I do. But I think we have to get our trash ordinance in place, get it established, and.
Get a revenue stream?
Get a revenue stream, and then we go back and we can make adjustments once we have it in place.
So are we doing an increase this year, the next year?
That's a for you guys to decide.
Deciding? Yes.
We'll be under the council.
In other words, I would like to see it get passed, so that we have it, and then we can go back, and once we start to have a revenue stream, we can adjust our appropriations. In other words, I would like to see it get passed, so that we have it, and then we can go back, and once we start to have a revenue stream, we can adjust our appropriations. We can ask for additional appropriations, we can pay some operating expenses. I know Kevin's fear is we don't have unspent, we will have unspent then. Because we can be using part of the trash tipping fees. I, so I will promise you, I will return you more sanitation money, and then a year from now, when we know where we're at, I think we need to get a levy created for M B H at that point in time. We can do this for a year. We can remain cash strong, go ahead.
Well, the tipping fee ordinance, we want to increase it for the, on January first, we're gonna have this first reading of that ordinance, has to be November, right?
I have a draft ordinance proposed for your review, um.
At minimum, we got to the November first reading, December second reading, which.
You can actually have the first reading at the August meeting. Then it has to be advertised, then you can have the second and third action.
So we got some time to think through this and understand it.
Yes, now, we want to be sure, it has to go on the bills, which have to be sent out by the first of the month, right? So it's, it's always a month delay.
Yeah, it's a parting better if we do have to do.
August, September.
Have the second reading in November.